Order, I will now turn it over to Mr. Cloud.
The Colonel has requested to participate in today's meeting from a remote location by electronic means because of a personal matter. In order to do that, a public body has to have a policy that would allow it, which the school board does, that's policy BDD. And certain things have to be established on the record, and then the public body has to vote to allow the member to participate in that fashion. So I'm going to ask Colonel a couple of questions to establish for the record as to what the nature of the personal matter is and also where he is participating from. And then I will turn the meeting back over to the Chair and the Clerk to conduct a roll call vote of the other members of the Board, not the Colonel, to allow him to participate in today's meeting from a remote location by electronic means. So, Colonel, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cloud.
All right, would you state for the record the nature of the personal matter that requires you to participate remotely today?
I am out of town to participate in a military honors event.
And give us a rough idea as to where you are participating from.
I am attending the meeting from my lodging in Alabama.
All right, with that, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to the Chair and Clerk for a motion and then a vote to allow the Colonel to participate in tonight's meeting from the remote location. After that, he can take part in the meeting just as if he was physically present.
Can I get a motion to allow the Colonel to appear at the meeting remotely?
Mr. Inge has made the motion, and it's been seconded in by Ms. Thomas. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine, Buffalo, Inge, Martin, Thomas, DeCalagiro.
Aye. Motion passes. Ms. Tanner, will you please call the full roll?
Basine, Buffalo, Inge, Martin, Paulson.
President, could the Chair speak a little louder?
Yes.
Thomas.
Thank you.
DeCalagiro.
Here.
At this point, I would like to ask Dr. Paul to make a statement.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair DeCalagiro, Vice Chair Thomas, members of the Board, community members present and those online. Tonight, as we continue our work on school consolidation planning, I want to introduce a new option, Option 5, that has been added for consideration. This option reflects the feedback we've heard from our community, and it represents a more deliberate and thoughtful approach, one that directly aligns with the Board goals and the measures outlined in our strategic plan. Option 5 begins with two initial consolidations. First, St. Helena with Southside STEM, which would allow Berkeley Early Childhood Center to move to a better facility. Second, Ocean Air with Ocean View, Bayview, and Mary Calcott Elementary Schools, which would allow Willoughby Early Childhood Center to move to a better facility. If approved and following a formal public hearing, these changes would be implemented beginning in the 26, '27 school year as the first part of the consolidation plan. While that transition is planning is taking place, a full study on all other school boundaries and attendance zones would take place and be completed by the spring of 2026 before finalizing the timeline for the remainder of the consolidation and closure plans, which would commence the following school year, '27, '28. In making these updates, it honors community voices while ensuring that academic achievement and educational planning remain at the forefront of our decisions. It is also designed to support our long-term goals of deconcentrating poverty and creating equitable opportunities for all students. This option also continues to allow for community engagement, not just through the Steering Committee but across the city, promoting transparency and building stronger buy-in for the decisions ahead. Specifically, Option 5 removes Monroe Elementary from the closer list with plans to place additional students in the building, keeps Ghent School in place for the moment while recognizing that rezoning may create a future opportunity for a better facility and future growth, adds the possibility of building a new J Cox facility modeled after Southside STEM Academy, potentially housing a citywide program in the future, creates the opportunity to expand Lake Taylor High School to include a comprehensive CTE program and a true alternative education program connecting students to rigorous programs, allows the creation of a professional development center at Lindenwood to strengthen staff learning, and importantly, it allows us to review zoning across the entire division so we can recreate the composition of all schools in ways that best meet the needs of our community and, most importantly, our students. In short, Option 5 provides the Board and the community with a path that is responsive, forward-looking, and grounded in both academic planning and equity. It sets a pace of closures that allows for thoughtful, sustainable decisions that will serve our students and our city well into the future. I'm looking forward to the continued conversation as we move this important work forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this point...
Colonel Paulson has a question.
Oh.
At this point, I'd like to open up for questions and concerns. Colonel?
I missed the first part of Dr. Paul's introduction about the community input for this new Option 5. When and where was that collected?
So this is responsive to the community input that was already collected, and then there would be further community input when you talk about the rezoning process.
Why is it so late being coming forward to be a new option?
So there was discussion, there was a two-by-two with two Board members at administration to talk about other options and opportunities that was also based off the board conversation that we had last week.
And those two Board members were the two-by-two yesterday?
That's correct. It was Ms. Basine and Mr. Inge.
Right, yeah, it's on your calendar, thank you. I just didn't know if you had another two-by-two.
No, sir.
That's all at this moment. I do have further questions in the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, would anyone like to speak to this proposal or to any other proposals? Ms. Basine?
Madam Chair, thank you.
Pick up a little bit, put your mic a little closer.
Thank you, thank you for recognizing me. So, yeah, last week, we left, you know, the administration brought forth four options based on the community feedback, as Dr. Paul just mentioned, and we talked about as a Board, you know, what else. We didn't actually have deliberation around what those options are, what we liked, what we thought were pros and cons of those options, and really thinking about it from a student-centered perspective. And then looking back at all the community feedback that we've received, especially around attendance zones and boundaries and being deliberate in the process, you know, any one of us had the option of talking to Dr. Paul, coming together with the full Board to talk about another option, if we had another option, or things that we didn't like about Option 1 through 4. And so that's what I brought forward to Dr. Paul and Mr. Inge, and we kind of worked through it and thought through what are some things that we can do and can't do, and we, after, what, an hour and a half of like really talking through some of these things logistically and from an academic standpoint, we kind of came up with this option that we felt like best addressed the needs of the community, best addressed, most importantly, the needs of our students, and allowed us the time to do this well versus in a rushed manner. So that's what this option represents. Just wanted to give that back since I know Colonel Paulson just asked about that.
And also to point out that the boundary work that is being proposed in this plan will be done by the spring of '26 so that we can move forward in the fall of '27 with additional school closures.
Right.
I have something to say. The four options that we had last week, and you all came up with the fifth option, two Board members, it's seven Board members. So that's not going to fly with me at all. That's the reason why we're having the meeting tonight, to come up, we was coming up with another option, like I said, last week. If we looked at the four options on the table, President on the table, maybe we can come up with an option after looking at all that, come up with something different. What y'all did yesterday was a little underhanded because nobody even knew anything about y'all's meeting. No, no.
Well, that was, so...
Ms. Basine? Go ahead.
Yes, so we left last meeting, any one of us can come up. That's what tonight is for, is for us to review an option. This is just another proposal. If there are things that you don't like about it right now, is the time for seven of us to come forward with any recommendations. Last week, all seven of us were here, we had the opportunity to bring forward any recommendations, there was nothing that was brought forward during the meeting.
But that's why we're having a meeting tonight. So what y'all did yesterday, you didn't have to do. You could have just waited till we had...
This is an option that we drafted to bring forward to the full Board for your review.
So what was the special meeting called for?
For you, right now.
So now we have five options instead of four to consider, and we introduced Option 5 tonight because it is a new option.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure we get it clear, there is no undermined, I'm operating full transparency, operating in uncompromising integrity.
No, you're not.
In actual opinion on that. However, what I will say is, last week, we resented with four options. This Board was here, the public heard those options, and then also, it was also echoed that we can come with another option. Myself and Board Member Basine, we came together as Board members that any other jurisdiction in the Commonwealth would do to do a two-by-two, because if you have more than two members, guess what, it's considered a meeting. And then we met with Dr. Paul to go over another further option that helped deconcentrate poverty, slow down the transition so it's not a big interruption to families, while also addressing equity and academic excellence at the epicenter of this.
But that's your opinion, Jason. That's just y'all's opinion.
And so that's why we're here today to talk about that. You could schedule a two-by-two with also Tiffany with Dr. Paul, but if I was there, it's considered a meeting. So we didn't do anything underhanded. We spoke with him about a recommendation on what our brains and our minds put together based on the data that has been provided to us. That's what we're supposed to do as Board members, come up with solutions, and we came up with solutions for our community. So I would echo that here, we come up with some more if you do not like these five.
The Colonel has had his hand up, so I want to first acknowledge the Colonel. Do you have a question?
I have a statement here for you. One, the special call was for the Board to meet, to come up with a plan like the Vice Chair said. From the four options, okay, now you have five, now you have six. I just emailed you each. Option number six that I was working on and was going to present. So it's now there for your consideration.
Ken, could you please email that to Karen so that she can post it to Board Docs?
I emailed it to the Board, to Dr. Paul, Mr. Fraley, Karen Tanner.
Okay, she needs to post that onto Board Docs. Now, anything further, Colonel?
Yes, I believe this Option 5, if we're going to talk about that now, or do I need my comments later?
I think, I'm going to, I am going to have us go through each of the options for pros and cons, and then we will get to five and we will get to six.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Moore Buffalo?
I just want to share, you know, I just want this Board to understand that each and every one of us has the opportunity to bring forth a recommendation or ideas around any of these options. For the spirit of thinking that Mr. Inge and Ms. Basine just went in some dark alley and came up with the fact that they were going to meet with Dr. Paul to come up with another option, it's just so far out there. We all have an opportunity to come up with alternative options. We left here yes, last week, and I think it was said, we need to make our own option. Well, they took the initiative to do that. And so, in the spirit of trying to be proactive Board members, you know, we don't knock each other for trying to be proactive and doing what's best for kids. That's not why we're here. So let's just stay, you know, above Board and stop going below Board. That's all I know.
Thank you.
That's all I need to say.
All right, so let's move on. Let's revisit Option 1. In terms of pros and cons, I'm going to start with a pro. It does, it does meet the criteria set by City Council in terms of closing 10 schools, but I'd also like to say a con is upon further review, it is not a option that can work in the timeline that was originally given. So, does anybody want to speak to Option 1? Anybody want to speak for or against it at this point?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So I did have an opportunity to review over the draft recommendations for Option 1. While I think they are, they are good, sound recommendations to a certain extent, I do see that Option 1, it slows the sinequation a little bit until the end of 2033, but it also prolongs our students still abandoning underperforming schools. And one of our Board goals is to ensure that every child goes to a high-quality school. And so, that's why I am not voting or never, never would be for Option 1, because while it does meet the City Council's goal, and I believe that the other options, some of the other ones recommended tonight would do that as well, and it does have a cost savings, but it is delayed, if you do look at the amount, as much as it costs us to close the schools, and then just keeping the students in low-performance schools. We're looking at Lindenwood, PB Young. I want to make sure that we address academic success, student-centered success, as the first and biggest thing, and set that as the basis, and I don't see it in this one.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against Option 1?
Madam Chair, I appreciate the effort that was put forth to create Option 1 with the information and data that was made available to the Steering Committee to come up with that list. As far as Option 1 through 3, you know, they all, to 4, what is lacking is that, well, there's a couple of things, that in these plans, it dictates where children are going to move to without doing a wholesale, look at the boundaries and attendance zones, which I think is a huge miss. So for me, that's an issue. And I've shared that in previous meetings, basically every time we've had one with Mr. Sturts. The other thing, and I share this with Dr. Paul, there are a couple hills that I am going to die on, which I'm using that phrase, is that I am not, I am not going to vote in support of displacing a whole school community for another, particularly at James Monroe. I appreciate the effort to look at ways of doing priority enrollment, and there just isn't enough room to do that where it would benefit a majority of the students at that school. And those are the conversations that I was grateful to have with Dr. Paul and his team to kind of work through some of those things and questions that I had. And so, with that, you know, that is not something that I can support. And so, that is, and that is present in all three of the other, all four, well, all three of the options except for four. The other thing is, is, you know, the goal from, for the last 10 years that we've had, been doing this educational planning work, creating socio-economically diverse schools has been one of the top goals, and it's part of our non-negotiables, it's part of, you know, if we are going to raise academic achievement and have it be at the center, this, these plans don't highlight that or align with that, as far as I can see. So that is, that is my challenge with these options.
Dr. Martin?
I agree with Ms. Basine in the concept of putting one student body into a school and then loading another, I think, and that is why I would like to potentially delay the Ghent and Monroe Elementary School, so putting the Ghent children in the program and the Monroe Elementary School, and then displacing the Monroe students. I absolutely am against that. And so what I would prefer to do is to delay that in the timeline until we can come up with a solid plan to combine the two programs on the...
Anybody else have anything to say about Option 1? Now, Option 2 changes the timeline, but the result is the same as Option 1. The biggest difference between Option 2 and Option 3, it's when we would relocate students to Ruffner from PB Young. Otherwise, the options are very similar, right? I'm not speaking out of turn. Otherwise, Options 2 and 3 are very, very similar.
PB Young is, yeah, PB Young is...
Right.
Yeah, you just flip on the timeline.
Anyone like to speak to Option 2, and I'd like to put Option 2 and 3 out together since they are so similar. Any pros or cons to Option 2? Colonel?
When we're giving our opinions now, we're not voting, we're just doing a straw poll and we will...
Right, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm just trying to foster discussion about the different options, to put out there the pros and cons and talk through what we like about a plan or what we do not like about a plan.
Okay, thank you.
So for me, between the two options, I prefer Option 3, although, again, we are displacing the Monroe community, which I have deep reservations about. And I do think that what we have missed all along is school boundaries and reallocating the schools to where students live inside the district, and I feel that that work, that boundary work needs to be done in conjunction to even thinking about a school closure or consolidation. We know the schools that have the worst FCIs, we know the schools that we want to consolidate or close, but I think we need to be looking at our boundaries, and this plan does not, neither of the plans speak to that. Inge, do you have a comment?
How did you know?
Because I can read your body language.
You can read my body language. I tell you, I like to be able to keep it, keep it that way, I guess. Madam Chair, recognize me?
Yes.
All right, awesome. So before Option 5 was put onto the table and I had opportunity to thoroughly review the options 1, 2, 3, and 4, I was coming to this meeting with Option 3, because, and just a few things that I saw, it did balance the urgency of meeting the City Council's needs and the capacity to address a lot of our high schools that have high FCIs, such as PB Young, Terrington, Larrington, I'm not Larrington, I'm sorry, Lindenwood. But it's not as an extreme pace as Option 2, so this is a little bit of a slower pace. Now, also, it also addresses academic achievement, which is one of our Board goals, and ensuring that we make sure student-centered academic achievement. It takes a lot of our students from academically challenged schools, and we put them in more high-performance schools. So that was the one I looked at as well. And it did offer a cost savings benefit a lot more than Option 1. However, after looking at those options and then at our previous Board meeting, being able to put forth another option and meeting in good faith with my Board colleagues, and meeting in faith with my colleague, we came up with a fifth solution. I'll go into details on the fourth one when Madam Chair recognizes me for that, on the reasons why I did not go for that, and making sure we take care of our community.
Anyone else like to speak to Option 2 or 3? All right, let's move on to Option 4.
I'm sorry, did you say Option 3?
We were speaking of both Option 2 and Option 3. Did you have any comments on 2 or 3?
I have a comment on Option 3.
Oh, please share.
Okay, that was my first choice. I liked the order and the fact that it was, the order that they had the schools in were in an appropriate order, but I think that they can be compressed a little bit so that the task can be ended earlier by a couple of years, and that's why I developed Option 6.
Okay, well...
I'll talk to 6, but I just wanted to say that my Option 6 came from 3, because that was the best option I saw as I reviewed the 4.
Okay, well, I'm going to have you introduce Option 6 when we get to that option.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on Option 2 or 3? I will say that initially, Option 3 was the option of the four that I was leaning towards, but now that there are two other options on the table, I'm reserving judgment at this time. Option 4 was developed to address many of the concerns expressed by the community. And would anyone like to speak to Option 4 as to why it's a good option or potentially why the option is not good or feasible? I do know that, Dr. Paul, you had shared some challenges.
With Option 4, one of the challenges would be, you know, moving around some of the pre-K from Monroe in order to fit Lindenwood into Monroe. Another challenge is, it doesn't meet the goal of really recalibrating our SES at school divisions. In some instances, it might exasperate that a little bit. The socioeconomic status of our student population was another challenge that this did not, did not do as well as Options 1, 2, or 3. this did not, did not do as well as options one, two, or three.
Anybody have any thoughts on option four, concerns?
I agree with, um, Dr., Madam Chair. I agree with Dr. Poll. I mean, it doesn't address the socioeconomic things that we need to address immediately for our students, for our students and overall for our families that will address the overall of our community's health. So I, I was, I want to keep Gent open, so that will always be my option. That's why I think option five is a great one. But I, I think this one doesn't really, we got to get to student success. That's the main thing. And I just don't see option four being able to address that. I need to address that as a center and then we can work off of everything else. But we got to get our children back to where they need to be. I don't know if you've seen the recent report cards for the nation put out for each community, but neither here nor there, but option four just wasn't the best one for me.
I think option four does not address some of the board goals at all. Therefore, it's, I don't believe it to be a feasible option.
Share your concerns. It was already like off mine.
Any other thoughts, comments, before we move on to option five? Option five was, a hard copy was provided at the beginning of the meeting. This option closes and moves early childhood programs next year and moves St. Helena into Southside STEM. Focuses on our early childhood centers. And then it still has the list of closures, but it's, it has put off the exact timing based on rezoning, doing a full rezoning. But the, my understanding is that we would still continue to close schools in '27, '28. Close the first round in '26, '27, but we would continue to close in '27, '28. So who would like to speak pros and cons of this option, Ms. Basine?
Madam Chair, I also want to point out that while there isn't a timeline for how many schools would close, you know, '27, '28, what it does allow is for the boundary and attendance zone work. I mean, the, the main piece of this is that we're not putting out here right now where students are going without that. So that's the real big difference in this option versus what we see in the other options, including option six, is that we're allowing the administration, working with the consultants, to do a full boundary plan before determining where students will go, which will give us a more real picture of what the capacity and utilization may look like in the school division. And I don't know if, Dr. Poll, if you want to speak to what the potential is of how many schools may close each year, you know, I think only you can really speak to that. But I, I do want to point out though, that it, the, the biggest difference in this plan versus the others is that it allows the boundary and attendance zone work to be done and complete and done thoughtfully.
And just to answer your question, Ms. Basine, some of that would depend also on, you know, the, both, both, all, all the plans, you know, rely on some, some rebuilds as well. And it would depend on the rebuild of J Cox as well as the, like, you know, Lake Taylor High School's, the CTE Comprehensive Program to be able to make those, those moves. And then it would just really, we could thoughtfully do a division plan of when it is best to move the students based off of what the rezoning looks like across the division and, and have time to think through that. So a, a solid number, I, I really couldn't answer each year. It, it possibly could speed up the process, you know, when, when you do a rezoning like this, but I wouldn't know until I have the hard data in front of me.
But it wouldn't slow down the process.
It would not slow down the process.
Would you say that, that, like broadly speaking, the timeline would remain relatively similar to what we've seen in the other options? I mean, I know you just mentioned speeding up potentially, but it wouldn't be longer than that.
It wouldn't be longer than what, excuse me, any of the first four options have. Because you, you notice when those were presented also, we put some pause timeline in there for the rebuilds to happen. So the same thing would have to happen when, when a new timeline is developed based off the rezoning.
I have been saying to myself and asking other people why we weren't doing the rezoning work at the beginning of this process. So I am in support of rezoning first and closing second. But that rezoning work would be finished in the spring and we would be able to continue to close schools on fall of 2027. My only concern is if we finish the rezoning work in the spring and we're closing schools in fall of '27, have we given that school community enough time to understand that change?
So if I may, that would, that would give us an entire year. So we would do the, we would do the actual hearings in the fall of '26 for a fall of '27, you know, change. So we would have actually more time than we were proposing the other options this way.
So, um, thank you, um, board member Basine, for your knowledge and historical knowledge of this information and data. And I've been able to take a look at it and look at where our scores are, look at our FCIs, and listen to the community input that we've had at various times. And this tells, the community has said one thing. Yes, this has to happen, but let's slow it down. And so I think that this option five, it addresses the, the good faith that we are closing, consolidating schools because we know budgetarily we need to do that. And this also meets the needs of our community saying, let's slow the progress. And like you said, many have mentioned redistricting and making sure that we also add that in there. So that will help deconcentrate the poverty that is in our city. And we know poverty is one of the greatest things that is affecting public education. And I believe that this is a sound option that has been put forth. And I do like that it has those dates to be determined. They will still be in that closing list, but we will determine that based off the needs of our families and our communities at that time. So I, I, I support option five as it is.
I'm a little confused. Was it, didn't Mr. Sturts say that we need, I mean, he, he gave us the heat map of where our students are, so we have an idea of where that is. So I remember his recommendation was that we talk about the schools first and then the rezoning.
So if I, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, and that's correct. So this option does, so if you recall at the last board meeting, one of the things I had also mentioned was, you know, the, the steering committee did great work for us and, and, and they looked at all the data and they came up with a list of, of buildings that, that were really the ones that, that we probably don't need to have in our inventory anymore. This follows that recommendation still, allows for rezoning to happen before we do, you know, where the students are going from those buildings. So the buildings on here are the ones that were the highest FCI or, you know, others that were determined that we didn't need on the inventory from the community input from the committee.
So the rezoning plan would essentially rezone by removing these schools
Correct.
from the portfolio and rezone based on the remaining schools?
Correct, and based off the heat map and based off where everybody lives now. I did, is, is the research I could, I know, you know, the, the one who would have overseen any rezoning in the past has, has, it's been more than 22 years because it was longer than, than he's been here since we've done anything with rezoning. So it's decades since we've done anything. And we know our population in the city has changed and shifted in, in the decades. So it really is time to look at a full rezoning process. And, and what better time than if we're looking to consolidate schools?
And, Dr. Poll, with this option, this will address a lot of our areas that are challenged with poverty and helping to deconcentrate it and focus on student success.
So I, 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 I'll say a cautious yes to that. If you remember, Mr. Sturts also said in his presentation, you know, we can't fix it all with school zoning.
Of course, of course.
But we can do better. So this does better. It allows us to do better.
Okay. All right, cool.
Other thoughts, concerns?
I was just going to say, this is the opportunity to, to do better because we can't change the landscape of our city, but we can sure put effort in changing the landscape and, like you said, concentrate the poverty in our, in our schools and reshape what that looks like in the city of Norfolk. So I like option five. But I'm, I'm waiting to hear what Colonel, Colonel Pollson says about option six, so.
And I just, Madam Chair, just want to, just add one thing, and Colonel, I'll let you have your go at it. Because I definitely want with any option, making sure that we keep on the committee so that they can still provide that valuable input because they are a vital asset that we need to make sure that we hear. Because we can't hear all the people's paws pulsing what's going on. But I, I thank them and I want to just keep them on through all of it.
One thing that I noticed is that Gent and Monroe are not on option five.
Correct.
There, there is a caveat that as we go through the redistricting and zoning process, that there's the potential of perhaps finding a better space for Gent Elementary. So it doesn't mean that that program might not be moved in the future, it's just not set to be moved at this point.
That's correct. And, and Monroe will be a part of the rezoning. And so we'll, we'll virtually add students at Monroe.
So when you say Monroe will be part of the rezoning, so is that still being, because I don't see them on this plan.
Yes, so basically, the, sorry, the, these, the buildings here would just, basically we would take them off our inventory and rezone based off the schools that remain. So Monroe would still remain on our inventory and we would rezone with Monroe as a school.
A lot of the concerns that our, our Gent parents that have been.
But I, but I do think it's important to notice, it doesn't mean that the Gent program isn't going to move at some point. It's just not set to move right now.
Colonel? Colonel?
Before you end, there's a discussion going back and forth there and I realize it, but before we jump to six, I would like to comment on five.
Yes, please do. Do. You have a comment for five?
Option five is, you said it has, requires a rezoning, but that can't occur until after the school closures and consolidations are finalized. Our consultant, Mr. Strutz, told us that continuously and over. That makes option five a red herring and not an effort, but an effort to delay. There is no specific timeline delineated for the events for after school year '25, '27, and all those are marked to be determined. This is not a facilities plan or a plan for educational success. It is diversion driven by political alliances that has no positive scholar outcome. That's why I submitted six. As a reminder, the city council passed a resolution in March warning if the closures are not implemented in timely manner, they may shift MPS to categorical funding, thus giving council more direct control over the appropriations to offset losses from underused buildings. A board email, correction, a, the board received an email earlier today from a council person who echoes that warning again. It would be foolish for the school board to ignore the clearly stated expectations of our funding body. If MPS were to return to categorical funding, it would be negatively impact our ability to manage our budget. It has the potential to provide our funding body the ability to make key decisions for us. Another risk with the categorical funding is it allows larger than necessary year-end reversions that could have been captured for MPS. Unfortunately, it appears that there, the, the option five is not supported by data-driven recommendations, but rather it seeks to costly delays that will impact our scholars' outcomes. Look at the big picture. What events do we have that would cause this delay advantage? The superintendent's search, future political elections, our pay raise? What, what, why do we want to delay? We have a window right now to make a thoughtful phased decision that aligns with our consultant's findings and preserve our financial independence. I urge us to move forward without delay. The real question is, does the board have the political will to act or we yield to self-interest? We already have the data. We've had it for years. We need to make a logical decision. From the production of Hamilton, there's a saying, it says, "I'm not going to throw my shot." Let's not throw ours away. Let's reject delays and move forward with diligence and support our scholars and not fail them again as we did on June 11th. I yield the floor.
Thank you for your, your, your comments, Colonel. Would anyone else like to speak?
You want to tag it first?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm extremely disappointed in this conversation. I, I, first, I want to say, I would like to know from the minister, what delay is being caused by option five? Is there a delay being caused by option five?
So there, without a timeline being on here, there's no definitive. However, when we have the rezoning, our, our plan is to follow the same timeline as the other options. The only delay would be on any rebuild of J Cox or another school where we might need space. Other than that, there wouldn't be a delay compared to the other options. That's not the, the purpose that, that we put forth in this option.
While I, and I'm going to call it for what it is, orchestrated attempt to make it appear as if there is something underhanded happening here. This is an option that is absolutely rooted in data, in historical information that has been provided by the consultants over the last decade, has been vetted with our school board goals at the front and center, in alignment with our non-negotiables and strategic plan. And whoever, I mean, if you have another option, bring it forward.
You have another option which we need to discuss.
And we're going to talk about it. And then, I mean, but I, I have nothing else to say. Like this is, this is crazy.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So I, I do have something to say. I believe civility is, should always be at the hallmark, so I'm going to keep it very simple. I don't, I don't take the, any of the accusations that a board member says this is politically motivated. This is not. This has been backed up by data that addresses the issues with urgency, addresses it with, with a sense of we need to address that we have too many schools and not enough children to address to fill them. And we have a city council that has other projects that they do need to take care of, but also they need to take some of these schools off because it is costing us a lot of money. This takes in making sure that we address student success and making sure we help address that our students are not achieving in low performing schools. students are not achieving in low-performing schools. So I just take resentment and I find it very presiditional for a board member to put out those accusations. Tanya and I came together as board colleagues, with any district would do in our Commonwealth, to put forth our knowledge that we have, both in this community, backed up by the information provided by the paid consultant of Norfolk Public Schools, and also by the data that that consultant, by their education competency and experience has put forth. And we have put forth a viable option that is rooted in nothing but integrity, transparency, and making sure that our students are the success. I am sick and tired of people accusing people of political posturing and allegations. That is not what is going on here. We need to stop. We need to come together. We are role models for our children. And our children need to see that we are addressing this urgency now and we have an option. If you have one, put it on the floor. Do your homework, put it on the floor. If not, then you come and you find one that works, and then we make sure we get this done. That, we need to get it done. And we need to move on so that we can keep focusing on Norfolk Public Schools and our families. That is all I have to say to that, Madam Chair.
And that's why we're having a meeting now, so we all can get together and come up with an option if we cannot agree with these, what is it, six options on the table?
Gotta hear Colonel- Oh! Madam Chair. Um, I'd really like to stick to the business at hand and not have these big staged, that should be handled in private. And of course, to Mr. Paulson's account, he did put a plan on the table, you know, option six. And also that the, this plan is, you know, it has a timeline to a point. And so it is not complete. And there is, we do still need to work on our trust between the two governing bodies of the city. And so I, I wouldn't completely blow that off. I think, you know, we, this shows that we're not gonna be making a decision tonight because we don't have a real timeline in front of us if we were choosing this option. There's still a lot of work to be done. So I just think that political arguments or disagreements out of this conversation and get refocused on. So.
I, I still, for me, I do not like that we do not have dates. But I do like this option because we are redistricting as part of the comprehensive plan. Just simply saying that we're moving students from one school to another when it might not make sense based on where they live and the proximity to their school, I think is, I think is short-sighted. So, you know, with this plan, I'd like for us to be able to say, we, you know, we will continue to close one to two schools per year. And maybe it's five in one year. Maybe we redistrict and we see how things flow in and we can say, oh, we can close five schools next year because we're moving all these students to other places. So this actually gives us the greatest ability to do the work quickly. Unfortunately, it doesn't, it doesn't satisfy what has been prescribed for us, what has been asked of us. But I still think that the redistricting portion is incredibly important here and rezoning our students to the right schools so they're not on buses driving past two middle schools to go to a third middle school. Dr. Martin?
Well, and, but that, that also goes to what I previously was trying to get clarification on. Without these dates and what's put here, it says, TBD, following full rezoning proposal also goes against our consultant's recommendation to, again, close, consolidate the schools and then focus on the rezoning.
But I think personally, I do believe it's better to identify the schools and rezone and then figure out the low-hanging fruit when you have students where it doesn't seem to make a tire sense like what school they get rezoned to. Because if we move these ten schools or nine schools out of our portfolio and then we rezone based on what we have left, we'll see where the students need to go, right? And to just make a blanket statement that we're gonna move this entire student body to this other school and close the first school doesn't take into account where they actually live in the city and what would make sense zoning-wise for that particular student in that particular neighborhood. So I would like to see some dates around option five, but I am in support of option five. And put dates in, and quite frankly, like, we can say, like, the two schools that we identified as closing first, we can.
In there, there, there.
And it, and it, but it, it doesn't preclude us to close Terrleton in twenty seven, twenty eight, or to also close Norview in twenty seven, twenty eight. Nothing about this rezoning plan precludes us from closing what schools need to be closed in what years. It might guide us a little bit to change the timelines, but I think we could still establish timelines.
Madam Chair, I still, I still see this as incomplete because again, Gant and Monroe are not accounted for.
Well, in this plan, Monroe stays a school. It'll get, the rezoning will fill up Monroe. Because right now, we have Taylor basically at full capacity and Larchmont at fifty-two percent capacity. So rezoning will help Taylor and it will also help to fill up Monroe and ideally Larchmont.
I'm just saying, it's just not on this, on this sheet. This needs to be-
It needs to be on paper.
Okay. Thoughts?
Oh, Colonel, thank you. Colonel?
Yes, thank you. I think we should look at this from a different perspective instead of options. We give the school division, the schools we want closed, what we want them to do with it, and a timeline, and let them handle the task. The more that we get into the sequence, the harder it's gonna be. Let them work it out. We can then come up with the resources to help make sure that it's done on that timeline that we give them. This, right now, we're going back and forth for this school, that school. We're too much in the weeds, I believe. If we look at it from a different approach, I think we could be more successful. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Could you suggest option five? Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm, I'm confused about too.
Ms. Bassin?
I just wanted to point out that that recommendation that Colonel Paulson just made is recommendation, is option five, where you have the, you have a list and-
Have a timeframe.
And you let the administration do the boundary work, the consult, and do all that and come up with a real comprehensive plan.
Understanding that we expect these closures to be done within the next decade.
Correct.
Chair, if I may, you know, with, with option five, when we look at option three, which was the other preferred option prior to, to most board members, it had an end year of twenty thirty-four. So if we just put, you know, to be completed by twenty thirty-four with school closures each year, then, I mean, then that, that gives us the freedom to be able to do what the Colonel said and kind of what the idea of this plan was, to, to look at, okay, these are the schools that the board says yes. These are the ones that we know we don't want on our roster anymore. In administration, your responsibility is to give us a list of how this is gonna happen. We already know the first ones because it's dated so that we can, you know, part of the proclamation from the city council was, or the resolution was, has to start in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. This holds to good faith with that. And then by the spring, we develop a timeline that would go through the years, but we could put an end date on it so that, you know, you know, if it gets to vote at the next meeting, the resolution that the board votes on could have that end date in it. And just like Colonel Paulson said, it would, it would follow that and give us a timeline and give us the freedom to come back after working on a zoning plan to the board. And, and just as a reminder to the, the board and the community, again, this is just the first part. Any school closure requires a public hearing for the zoning and everything else. So all the details have to be mapped out before we do that public hearing. So that, that gives us the time to come back and be able to do that work.
Colonel, would you like to introduce option six and talk about how it is different from previous options?
It, it is actually option three, but it's condensed by about three years. That's the only difference. All right, there's a couple of things that have been moved around, but I've moved everything up so it could be done swiftly, it could be done properly, and it could be done in a shorter amount of time and not have, but there were a couple slots in option three where there was a couple, a school year where there was no activity going on. And I can't remember off the top of my head which year it was. But we should be moving at a brisk pace each school year and doing it in a quicker manner than we're contemplating. Again, I go back to what Mr. Sturtz said, that you can't do the rezoning until after everybody has moved. You won't know ahead of time.
So, if I'm not mistaken, option three had some, had a year, had some time built in because we were looking at rebuilding schools? So if the biggest option is the, difference between the options is the timing, then this option doesn't give us the time needed to rebuild some existing schools.
I tried to keep everything in my suggestion paired up. In other words, like when they closed one school and repurposed it, those always stayed together because they have to be done in the same year. But the other individual schools, I look more at which ones are the worst set. We are admitting are the, the worst schools, one of them being Terrleton, and, and it should be at the forefront of what we're doing. And, and we can have more than one school or two schools, excuse me, buildings, one or two buildings a year could be closed. But we are seeming to want to not do that. And so that's why my option six is a little more aggressive. But we, we can do it. We just have to all come to agreement. But it's, whichever way we're gonna do, we're gonna do it. My last suggestion of just letting a school figure it out, I think is the easiest for everybody because then we don't have to come back and when something goes awry, we don't have to worry about it. The school can do that. The division, they can figure it out. They'll be the people on the ground and we can just make sure that they meet our overall objective on whatever year from now, that everything has been done except the things that are preset for CIPs and for build-outs and rebuilds. Those are some things we can't really control. We can to some degree. But there are some things that we cannot. So let's just let the school division do this.
Which is option five.
Well, no, because you don't have anything set in there and you're wanting to do the rezoning study before everybody has moved.
Well, we would, we would-
Doctor, I mean, Mr. Sturtz said that's not the way to do it.
Mr. Fraley, speak to that.
Yes.
Let me talk about rezoning. So we already have a purchase order signed. Rezoning is already in the works. All, all, you know, that's from the jump. All we need is the ten schools. Once we have the ten schools, they can start on the rezoning. And so that's in play right now. But we have to have the ten schools to rezone. And we're gonna rezone elementary, middle, and high all at once. So all the feeders, so that's not something that separates any of these choices. Number five is not different for, because we're gonna now zone. We've always had that in the plan. As far as moving forward, we need the list of schools to close and then they can rezone.
And, and you know, when I think of rezoning, I'm thinking about transportation as well. This can relieve some pressure on transportation. You know, human resources, financial resources, transportation, all of these things. So, Mr. Fraley, I'm glad you said that because we have the schools, the purchase order ready to go for the study. And if, if the only thing that's missing on this chart is dates, then put the dates up there. I mean, that's what I'm hearing. And, and the Gant stuff kinda indicate that there as well. But other than that, I keep hearing the same thing, really, that we're, we're all kinda agreeing to the same thing without the little nuance, that, you know, little thing, details that needs to go on this chart.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting on this until we have those details.
Oh, we're not, I'm just saying. Oh, oh, I, I understand, but-
I provided the other two board members with a detailed analysis of option one, two, and three. I can, I have copies tonight if you all would like to see those. I know the other two shared in those discussions already. I bought them just in case it came up.
Can we, can we do those digitally on board docs so that they're available to the community at the same time, Mr. Fraley? Thank you very much.
I can forward that to Karen in about two minutes from my cellphone, and then I'll hand them to you guys if that's acceptable.
Yes, thank you.
You all have any other questions? But, and we can close as many schools as you want. You tell me to close ten in one year, I'll make it happen.
We don't want that.
We're not talking about people and not robots.
So, let me just clarify. So what I'm hearing from you, Dr. Martin, is that option five is missing dates for you, like dates of school closures.
That, I mean, and I've said it over and over again, the, what are we doing about the Gant program and Monroe? And initially, at the early, one of my first comments this evening was potentially delay, delay that, well, not, let's see. I'd like for, again, first comment that Tanya had made, was, we are in agreement that we don't want to displace students for another student population. And so I think that that really needs to be worked out. And I, I know these, these, anyone associated in those two schools, what's to be decided. And so I'd like to-
So what I understand, and I'm gonna let Dr.-
So I appreciate that, Dr. Martin. So in this plan, Monroe would not absorb Gant because Monroe would remain an elementary school. And it would, it would, during the zoning process, we would add student population there because we know Monroe doesn't have as many students as it can have. But we can put the caveat on here that during the rezoning process, if there is a facility that's better for Gant, there's still a possibility that Gant would get moved in the future. But Monroe would remain an elementary school. Monroe would not be absorbing Gant. So it's not even on the table anymore on option five. Monroe does not, does not become a different program- Monroe does not, does not become a different program. We're not displacing any students. We're going to add students into that building through a rezoning process. But we'll put a caveat on here about the, like the line I read when I opened that, you know, through the rezoning, if there's a possibility where there's a different placement for GEP in the future, that will still be looked at.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
Other comments, Dr. Paul, Colonel Paulson?
Yeah, I was going to comment on six. I can explain my logic for everyone, or why I selected the items the way I did.
Okay, please do.
Ready?
Yes.
Right. The first year, 26, 27, there are, one, two, three, four, five schools that would close, two that would be repurposed. That seems like a lot in numbers, but it moves quickly. They are the same as in option three where it says where the students are going. All that remains the same. I didn't change their destinations. Then in 27, 28, there will be three closures and two repurposes. And then we're pretty much done until the CSEP and Lake Taylor is done in the out years. And those may change. But in two school years, we could do the majority of the transfers, the closures, and move on to bigger and better things.
Sure, absolutely.
Option six definitely wouldn't work, Mr. Paulson, because we lose the trust in the community. I'm talking to students, the parents, the stakeholders, the teachers, the principals, the whole MPS. We said from the beginning, what was it, one to two schools a year? So we can't come and say five to six schools, that's not going to cut it. So that definitely would not work.
Okay, thank you for your input. And that's for, which, you're coming through, there's a lot of echo. So what school were you talking about specifically?
I wasn't talking about the school. I was talking about the schools in your option six of closing, of repurposing five to six schools in one year. Very aggressive. We're talking about students, people, and we're not talking about what?
Robots, robots.
And I worry that we won't do the work to prepare and plan to the best of our ability if we are hurrying through the process.
The repurposing is, both of them are for changing from elementary to ECCs. I had asked the question, I think, before, could you do more than one in a year? And the answer was yes. So that's why I only have two repurposes in 26, 27. And in 27, 28, there's only four schools really that we're looking to repurpose. And as far as the closure, if you look at the number of students, where they're the smallest, the impact on all the services you talked about, the teachers, the principals, the administrators, et cetera, et cetera. It was counted for before. I just moved them to closer together.
Thank you. Ms. Moore Buffalo?
Colonel Paulson?
Yes.
Can you share your thinking around J Cox Elementary School, year 29 to 31?
Those are what are on the plan already. This is the exact thing that's on option three was those years.
No, I'm reading, instead of building this site new because it is so close to the new Richard Bowling, is there a way to build a new 3-8 STEM-based school on the Lindenwood site? Maybe have a partnership with the Elizabeth River Project?
That was a comment I got from a constituent on that. And that's why I put it there, was something I got.
Okay, thank you.
It didn't influence my, my thinking of leaving the rebuild for J Cox in 29, 31.
Now, as I understand it, our 10-day count showed a decrease in the number of elementary school students. Is that correct, Dr. Paul?
Correct, just shy of 200 from last year's 10-day count to this year's 10-day count.
But we'll have a 30-day count, which will give us better numbers.
Not before the projected vote?
But not before the projected vote.
We ought to everybody to not rush this process. I know it's been a long time coming, but it's really just been put in our laps. And I think we just need to go back to the table and come up with a great plan that's going to benefit our babies. That's what we need to do. Because right now, we all cannot agree upon these six plans. So I think we need to go back and take the six plans together and just take them apart and then bring them back together and come with a plan that's going to suit Norfolk Public Schools.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. Martin, you're only speaking that.
What was I going to say? That's, I like what Ms. Thomas is saying because I would have liked to have had more of a hands-on, walk-through some scenarios approach to this.
Well, I do have a question to pose to the board. Are we in agreement about the school closures? Are we in agreement about the schools that need to be closed? I mean, can I take a straw poll?
So we're agreeing with these schools, these schools that we have here.
Yes, do we?
I mean, some are being closed as schools and then repurposed.
Right, but, okay, I take, I take that statement back. Do we agree about the building closures, of which buildings need to be closed? Can we come to any kind of consensus on the identified buildings and whether or not we agree that those buildings need to be closed?
Madam Chair, I just want to point out that the buildings that would be closed differ in the options. Particularly, option five does not include the closure of GEP. So that is something to keep in mind.
It leaves it on the table for the future.
Right, but, but as far as the list of schools, I'm just pointing out that the options differ in which schools are.
Right, but that's, but as far as I can tell, that's the only difference. Am I incorrect consolidating and?
There are two lists with schools. I think we need to come together and come up with 10 schools that we're going to close. Seven board members.
Let's do that right now. Let's do that right now. That's why we're here, that's why we're having this meeting.
Not necessarily in the order we're coming with, but we're just going to have 10, correct?
Right. So I am looking at the plans. One that is in all the plans. That building is sinking into the swamp and I understand it would take.
So do we all take a vote on each school?
Well, I think, I think we can come to, try to come to consensus to identify the schools that.
So do we all agree Terrleton needs to be closed?
Colonel, would you agree that Terrleton needs to be closed?
Okay, as I understand it, you're going to, we're going to announce, or not announce, but try to come to a consensus on which ones we're going to close, correct?
Correct.
And just 10, or are we going to pick 12 and then in case we don't agree on others?
We're going to go, we're going to use the lists that were initially provided to us, all of the lists. And we will start with those schools on that list. So the question.
On which, which list?
On all four of the options.
All four of them, okay.
Five, six of the options, I'm sorry. But Terrleton has been on every single list. Are we in agreement that Terrleton needs to be closed? I'm raising my hand.
Oh, you want to say something?
No, I'm just like, yes.
How do you want us to do this? Anybody object to Terrleton being closed? There's agreement. Norview Elementary School. Anyone object to the closure of Norview Elementary School? Young. Anyone object to the closure of PB Young?
I do, only because of what school you're moving him to. Are we ready, are we ready for that?
So I think.
They're going to Roughness.
Not necessarily. Because when we're looking at a full rezone, it may not be Roughness anymore. We're looking to see if we can, because a lot of the community feedback was around not placing the babies at Roughness.
So where they going, J Cox?
We, depends on the rezoning.
That's not a good option neither.
I'm not saying it is. I'm saying we'd have to look at the full rezoning plan. Once we have the 10 schools, we'd come back with a rezoning plan that the board would still have to vote on.
I'm not with PB Young.
So we have one objection with PB Young. Right. Granby Elementary School. We have agreement that Granby should be closed. Do we have anybody who disagrees with the closure of Granby? I know that's close to your heart. But in terms of, in terms of its condition and what it can.
We previously talked about rebuilding it before this conversation came about. Definitely in its current state, it's not.
Right, and, and we really need to focus on closing the buildings, not, we're not closing out students. We're just closing a building that is housing students. Not educationally appropriate for them to be. Madison and Open Campus at Easton. About closing. Is that on here? It's on option five. Option five.
And that is contingent, though, on, I don't know if Dr. Paul, if you want to clarify that?
Yeah, that would be contingent on being able to fund the alternative program to move to Lake Taylor High School. And that was the one that was put on when Monroe was taken off for option five.
All right, so let's look at the ECC. The idea was to close Willoughby, close the building at Willoughby, but move the program to Ocean Air. That seems to be on all of the proposals. So are we comfortable with closing the building of Willoughby and moving the program to Ocean Air? Have a problem with that. Second one with the ECCs, closing the building of Berkeley, moving that program to St. Helena. Because of the condition of.
Condition is so bad, why would we move other babies into school?
We're not moving anyone into Berkeley.
I thought you said ECC is going to St. Helena.
Berkeley ECC, does Berkeley have other programs other than the ECC?
Berkeley, we would close the ECC Berkeley and move them to St. Helena.
Okay, but if St. Helena is so bad, why would we move other kids into the building? So why not try to repurpose St. Helena and keep the kids there instead of sending them to Camp Estella? And move the pre-K to Camp Estella.
The, you know, when, when, again, this was, this was a part of the work of the committee that came back to us when they looked at all the data pieces. And this was a community input that created this. So again, the bottom line is, it's, it turns out, it's a board vote that does everything. That was the recommendation of the committee was to move, because there's room at South Side STEM to move St. Helena into, give them a better building, a better facility. And Berkeley, early childhood, a better building because St. Helena's in better condition, Berkeley.
I don't know about that. So I'm just not understanding the logic of moving a set of kids out of the school. Move needs to be just redone and you're going to move other kids in the building. I just don't.
Well, do we agree that Berkeley needs to be closed? The building at Berkeley needs to be closed?
I'm a little lost. So what document are we looking at?
I have got every document in front of me and I am looking at the schools that were slated for closure. Because we, because like the first part of this process is to identify, to make sure that we identify the schools that needed to be closed.
Do I have it? That was this one?
Thank you. So I'm cross-referencing multiple options here in terms of identifying the schools.
But I mean, I do agree with Ms. Thomas is that talking about, it's almost, it's, FCI is way too high to, St. Helena.
Yeah, by two. Better option for where Berkeley goes. Would like to see a better option for where Berkeley, if it is.
Yeah, it just doesn't, and of course, by the time, depending on where that is in the timeline, it could be potentially worse, right?
Technically based on, yeah.
The school is like across the street from, you know, the STEM Academy. So you wouldn't be, you know, taking the parents out of their norm.
By moving the St. Helena students to.
Uh-uh, moving ECC to STEM because it's like right across the street.
Thomas, are you suggesting keeping St. Helena, St. Helena as it currently is and just moving?
Not as currently, no.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to get clarity on.
No, it needs to be redone. It needs some fixing. But I'm saying you're just moving the whole family out of school. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Because you're thinking about the teachers and the students, just like with any other school we're talking about. But I think this school right here is just, it doesn't make sense to move them out and then you're bringing somebody in, but the school is so bad. I don't think that's fair at all.
Dr. Paul, so it's leaving Berkeley, going into.
St. Helena, we're talking about smaller kids. So there is a requirement to go in and do some repurposing in the school because it has to be equipped for our little ones. So we're, all of that, so those things will be done to welcome those, those students to the new building. So it's not like they're going in that building as is. There are things that need to be done for those kids to go in that building. for those kids to go in that building.
There'd be furniture upgrades and restroom upgrades, and to make sure that we can accommodate the younger students, correct?
Work done to reach the FCI at St. Helena?
There, is there, is it on the CIP, Mr. Fraley, for anything at St. Helena right now?
Madam Chair, is there, is there space at Southside STEM Academy to absorb Berkeley ECC and St. Helena, or no?
No, we couldn't do both of them there.
So another option would be to move-
The buildings are, the FCI, they're very similar, FCI is right now, one's .71, one's .69. That could be an option where then you're displacing less, so you would move St. Helena into Southside and keep Berkeley where they are.
And St. Helena is very close to Southside.
So Berkeley, like Ms. Thomas saying, Berkeley is literally around the corner, you can, if you look at the right angle, you can see Southside STEM, and then St. Helena is about 1.1 miles down the road from Berkeley. Yeah, mm-hmm, throw a rock to Ms. Moore Buffalo's house.
So it seems like, I'm proposing that we have to do something. So either we move St. Helena into Southside STEM and close St. Helena, or in that way we would keep Berkeley where they are, or we could do the double swap of moving St. Helena into Southside STEM and moving Berkeley over, which financially to me, since their FCI's are so similar, and Berkeley is already set up for early childhood, it doesn't make financial sense to me, this is just me, and I can be wrong, so please tell me, to move those students at all. Yeah. Right. Okay, but .69 and .71 are basically a statistical tie. So how about, I'm gonna throw this out there, the option of keeping Berkeley where it is and moving St. Helena into Southside and closing St. Helena. Anybody have any thoughts on that option?
I'm really struggling here, because, I mean, those are all the schools, right? On the map? Over there. I really, I could bring it over here.
Me too. Can we put it, can we put it in front of the podium?
I'd really like to, let's see.
Put it in front of the podium?
Different when you're driving down the street, but, um-
Ms. Messine, did you have something, a comment?
Yeah, I just, so just in terms of, envisioning the long-term goals for ECCs, so is there opportunity for expansion at Berkeley ECC if-
Yeah, ECC's not at capacity right now.
Okay.
We, so, I believe those buildings are very similar in size as well.
Okay.
So it-
That's what I thought, but yeah.
That would be a fair, a very fair recommendation, was to be, leave Berkeley where they are, move St. Helena students to Southside STEM, and close the facility at St. Helena.
And can you elaborate on what, or maybe Mr. Fraley, like what the thought process originally was to move Berkeley ECC?
I think the main contributor there was the FCI, that Southside STEM, or sorry, St. Helena is in a nominal better condition than Berkeley, Berkeley is. However, you know, with the funding for the upgrades to restrooms and furniture and stuff that Berkeley wouldn't need, you know, some of that could go into Berkeley's conditioning. Can you, Mr. Fraley, can you turn it so everybody can see it? The top is towards your feet, that would be great. Yep, that way all of us can kinda see it evenly.
Alright, so-
Read off your proposal again, Madam Chair.
My proposal is that we move St. Helena into Southside STEM, leave Berkeley where it is, and then close St. Helena, and potentially, the money saved from not moving Berkeley to St. Helena could help with the FCI at Berkeley, potentially, I'm not- But it seems like, why move the cheese if we don't have to move the cheese, right?
Oh, you're that mouse.
If it's a wash either way, then why uproot a program and move it? Move it. What do you all think about that? Do you have any objections to that?
I do.
Just a second, a minute.
Yeah, I do. I'm just, I'm just thinking, if you was moving some kids into that building anyway, and you was gonna repurpose or do whatever you was gonna do, why you can't leave the school the way it is and repurpose as St. Helena?
Well, because we, Dr. Paul said we cannot support the number of-
So if, Ms. Thomas, if I can ask a clarifying question, so you're, you're recommending the possibility of moving Berkeley's early childhood into Southside STEM?
They have two schools around here.
Right, and then, and then so leave St. Helena as is, and move Berkeley's ECC over to Southside STEM, and one of my comments to that would be, a lot of the research that's gone into the consolidation efforts is the count in a middle, in an elementary school, and wanting around 500 students per elementary school, so that we can make sure programmatically we're able to offer everything we can offer, and St. Helena, they don't have the capacity to hold that many students there. So that would be, that's the justification of why St. Helena was moved originally into Southside STEM, is because it's such a small school, I think they're at around-
232 kids.
That was as of last year.
But one reason why people moved away and don't want their kids in that school, because it's the way the school is. That school is a mess. I wouldn't want my kids in there neither. So if you repurpose the school and build it up, trust me, enrollment will go up.
But we have to also remember here, we are going to, as a board, have to make compromise, that we may, we're going to have to take some compromises and go after the greater good. St. Helena moving would give it a much better facility. I would look to administration to tell us what can be done about culture at Southside STEM, that people-
There's been a new principal there, I think that's changed immensely.
The culture is still not wonderful at all. So what we talking about, moving the kids, at what part of this process?
Well, we're just identi, we're just identifying schools, we said that we needed to identify the schools.
Because we need to get that school right in the inside, culture-wise, before we move another school into that school.
Right.
Because it's gonna be a disaster.
One of the other indicators, if you, I gave you all the big analysis, if you look at the, the one where we're talking about the major indicators we reviewed, currently, Berkeley ECC needs $13 million worth of priority work, and St. Helena only needs $8 million. That was another factor we weighed, there was less needed for major improvement to make-
So even though the FCI's are off by about .2, 2.5?
Well, certain things inflate the FCI faster, when you make the changes, like HVAC, new roof, new windows, those things lower it, lower it, lower it fast.
So we are talking about a $5 million difference?
We're talking 8 million to, to, for St. Helena, and 13 million for Berkeley, 5 million, yes ma'am.
So $5 million.
That was one of the factors as well, and then the slight difference in FCI. And as you guys know, the city only gives us 3 million a year for CIP work. So $5 million is a year and a half's worth of CIP budget.
Yes, Ms.?
Also have some staffing challenges at St. Helena as well.
Berkeley.
And Berkeley.
I will say though, St. Helena is fully staffed this year. With no, no long-term subs, they do have a couple associate teachers, but I was, actually I was over there this morning, and she is fully staffed. It is.
Please, Ms. Messine?
I was just gonna say, and Berkeley does have vacancies, high teacher vacancies there, that I was looking at personally.
So now that we have that extra piece of information about the $5 million differential in getting the schools where they need to be?
Those are for every, it's in the analysis sheets I shared with you, we have a breakdown for the elementary, the high schools, the middle schools, the hybrids, and the ECCs, all of that is in that packet I gave to you just a few minutes ago.
Alright, well, let's try to come to some sort of consensus. Yes, Colonel? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. I acknowledge you. I don't think he can hear you. Colonel?
Okay, thank you. Could you recap which ones have been selected, or I'd say, usually made upon for closure at this point?
Willoughby, Terrellton, Norview, and Granby.
Wait, 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 okay, I missed Willoughby, I would, that's the one I was kinda looking for, I figured it would be at the top too, okay? So Willoughby, Terrellton, Norview?
And Granby.
What about PB Young?
We haven't gotten there yet. We had one objection to PB Young, so-
Alright, so we're actually down then to four.
So we have, we have five, we have PB Young with one objection. I have, I have Willoughby-
Norview, Granby, and?
Terrellton. And PB Young. That is dependent, that is contingent on, on Lake Taylor, so that is not something we can make a decision at this moment. But there were no objections on that one.
Norview, Granby. And that's it?
Willoughby, Terrellton, Norview, Granby, PB Young with one objection.
Okay, PB Young, that's five.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so knowing what we now know about the state of Berkeley versus St. Helena, and also knowing that we have to close a facility in that area, correct, am I speaking out of turn? It's back on the table to move Berkeley into St. Helena and move St. Helena to Southside STEM, because of the difference in the cost that it would take to-
Back to the original one.
Original. Berkeley to St. Helena, and then St. Helena? Not just moving Southside STEM.
St. Helena would be repurposed, but there is a $5 million differential in terms of what the work that needs to be done at St. Helena long-term versus the work-
Both of them are facilities that are not in the best of shape.
Right.
But St. Helena is, it's a lot less than-
A lot less money to fix it than it is to fix Berkeley.
That money was assigned by our architects that did the full review of all of our buildings. That was their projected cost.
So I know we have one objection for Ms. Thomas.
Objection two.
Moving Berkeley to St. Helena, St. Helena into Southside STEM.
That was just based off the conditions of the school?
Basically moving, saying the school is so bad, but you're gonna move ECC, I think, why not move ECC Stella and keep St. Helena where it is? So you don't uproot and all this other thing, you're just gonna put money into the school anyway.
Right, but the idea is, in terms of cost-saving measure, it's going, can't operate Berkeley, St. Helena, and Southside STEM in that area.
But you wasn't, you're gonna close ECC.
That's what we're discussing.
Right, I was saying, move ECC into STEM Academy.
That's a K-8 school, so you wanna make that-
Why you can't put them in? You put kindergarten in there.
We have one pre-K.
Doesn't the ECC also do pre-K 3?
Mm-hmm.
And would that be the best option to put pre-K 3 in a school that's K-8?
Well, you're gonna try to move pre-K from PB Young into Roughness? Some of them kids all gonna go to Roughness, so you can't say they're not, because some of them are going.
But pre-K 4, I'm saying we move-
Is that pre-K 3 and 4, what's the difference?
Pre-K wasn't gonna move to Roughness.
It was never moving to Roughness.
Pre-K wasn't gonna move to Roughness.
Where's pre-K going then?
Pre-K would have been rezoned.
So you can move babies all the way from, babies going to Jaycocks? Because Jaycocks has pre-K.
Jaycocks, or another school nearby, or Monroe even, where there's, but other, other areas, but we weren't gonna put pre-K over at, at Roughness.
But you have kindergarten over there. Okay. Babies is a baby.
So we have one objection to that movement, do we have any other objections to that?
I'm not ready to object too much right now, because I still feel like we have a lot to discuss, so-
Right, but we, but we have to move forward, so we're, I'm simply trying to have us identify the schools that are going to be closed. So I'm gonna say Berkeley, because we have one objection, Berkeley would do that movement that has been already proposed. So St. Helena will be repurposed, but Berkeley will be closed. Alright.
To meet the needs of the Berkeley students for their accommodations.
Purposing Ocean Air, that is on all the plans.
We close Willoughby, we have to do that.
Purposing Ocean Air is on the table. This, based on zoning?
I mean, we have a projection in the first three things, but, I mean, technically, now that we're gonna rezone everything, we'll do it based on, but they will fit in that area. Three schools within a mile or so of it, as you can see in the analysis. Just so everybody knows how to read this sheet, so the first column is the FC, well, the, the capacity, it's listed by the current number of students, the second number is the capacity, the percentage is the current utilization, and then the other school assigned to it is the same thing, and then when we move those students into that school, it'll, it shows the change by total number of students as well as the new utilization.
Madam Chair? I just, I don't wanna distract, I don't wanna be distracted by the receiving schools piece, because I think we've all agreed that let the boundary work dictate what the receiving schools are gonna be.
Yes.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, I'm just referencing that when we do the boundaries, it'll be the closest schools, and those are the three closest schools. Threw that out.
Now, let's talk about-
Allison has his hand up.
I'm sorry, Colonel, thank you guys for keeping me on. Thank you guys for keeping me on.
What about Lindenwood?
I was about to get to Lindenwood. Haven't discussed it yet. That was my next one.
Okay, thank you.
So Lindenwood, it appears that we are moving the students out of Lindenwood regardless. And either repurposing it for a professional development center for the school system, or just closing it and giving it back to the city. I would like to put forward the idea of repurposing Lindenwood for a professional development center for the school system and not turning it back over.
Um, yeah, going back to earlier, it was mentioned that we had, we have a partnership with the Elizabeth River Project and all of the investments that have been made there and to have the, you know, the orchard and all, all the work, and it's still very much, you know, an educational center inside and out.
Right, and it still could be used as that.
Right, and with the gardening and everything, the gardening program, which has been really wonderful for the students. I really would like to protect Lindenwood and keep it as a professional development center.
I agree with her.
Okay, so, Colonel, do you understand what was on the table is to repurpose Lindenwood into a professional development center and not give that back to the city?
Okay, I, I couldn't quite hear all that, there was a lot of echo, it sounded like some noise in the background.
So, the idea is to repurpose Lindenwood into a professional development center for the school system.
Okay, are we gonna get any documentation that will support that cost?
I'm sure Dr. Polk can share with the school division has paid in costs at hotels and things like that, holding professional development. I'm sure having a Lindenwood repurposed for a professional development center will save the district tons of dollars. I'm sure of that.
Long-range, it would be a cost savings for the division, because any large meeting we have to have now, we have to have off-site, principals' meetings, assistant principals' meetings, there are several that we have, that, that we do have to contract out and pay for, and it would be, it would be limited amount of work to be done there, you know, to, to, to set it up for what we would need to start with.
How much is it a year to run Lindenwood?
The cost I'm talking on, about the operating...
Oh, he's talking.
...building, and how much are we spending on rented rooms, et cetera, somewhere else? Because these schools, the buildings, they're larger, they may not give us a return on, on our investment. That's my concern. We, I, we, we have not talked about that at all, but I think it needs to be a factor we should think about.
One of the documents that was uploaded into the board docs gave a breakdown of the costs and the average utility costs that were taken, and it was over a, a two-year period, you know, I, I know it's been a, a few years since it's been done, but it was around $100,000 for the utility cost. The staffing cost would come out, because it would be, it would be staffed with folks that we have staffed in other buildings right now. So it would be, you know, the, the, the root cost would be $100,000 a year to keep. Like Dr. Martin said, there are, there are items on that campus that have been built out over years that would be still useful, and it would be, you know, many divisions our size have some kind of a professional development center to be able to host meetings. Even when we do regional meetings, there's, when we're doing, doing the school, school day, there's limited places where we have, where we can offer space for a regional meeting.
So would you say that we can, can have spent near $100,000 a year on rental space?
Without the numbers in front of me, I, I can't give the exact figure, but it is not inexpensive to hold a meeting at, at a hotel.
And we would need one custodian there, which is probably thirty...
So we're talking about keeping the building going at a cost of about $130,000 a year? Give or take?
That doesn't account, you know, account for deferred maintenance, when things break down, we have to replace them.
I just wanted to echo, I mean, one of the things I've consistently said is that I want to keep Lindenwood in our portfolio for not just professional development, but like Dr. Martin said, as, you know, potential environmental, educational hub, and also, you know, while we're talking about closing schools, we also have to be careful about not closing too many too fast, because our population, what other districts are seeing that are rightsizing, they're also seeing, you know, enrollment picking up, and so, and why they, while they've given back a lot of buildings, you're like, wait, we need to maintain some buildings, so that's one that I think we need to keep in our portfolio, so I support what Dr. Martin has shared and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have consensus on repurposing Lindenwood?
I have another question.
Oh, absolutely.
So you're saying the students are going to go to Will...
Wait, they're gonna be rezoned, so we...
What, what school? That's what I'm asking.
Well, that depends on the rezoning, but what would be the potential rezoned schools? What are close to Lindenwood?
Willard. J Cox. J Cox is close, right across the street. Right. Yeah, J Cox.
It depends on where you are, because if you go back the other way, Willard is close, depending on where you are.
And if you go across the street, J Cox is close.
That's why the zoning piece is so important.
I also want to point out, so, one of the, one of the things, and this is, as part of the rezoner, rezoning boundary plan, I mean, coming up with some guiding principles about what would guide that would include, that, you know, that we are creating concentrating poverty, and that we are creating enhanced learning environments for every student, so that also has to be taken, it's not just what's in close proximity.
Right.
But what would provide trade-up opportunities for our students.
Well, close-up have a lot to do with it. A lot of parents don't drive. So you're setting our babies up for failure. If they miss the bus, how they gonna get to school? If something happened in school and the parent got to get there real fast, how are they gonna get there to get their child from school?
But, but we can't cure everything in the Southwest. We inherited that, you know, we can't fix all that.
I want that to be a later school. We're gonna move on.
Alright, so we've got repurposing Lindenwood without any major objections. Yes, Colonel?
Okay, back, back to, to Lindenwood, I hope we didn't leave that yet. I still think that we should have some information about the cost, because we, we announced to everybody that would it cost $800,000 a year to maintain a, a elementary school, which includes lots and lots of things that won't be in use when there's, the population is reduced to teachers and training, et cetera, like that. But we still have to have staff, we still have to have somebody that's there.
No, actually, the cost, the cost, I think you missed this, I think you missed the part of the conversation where they were talking about the cost of, I got really loud, of, of repurposing Lindenwood, and it would be about $100,000 a year for utilities, and the addition of a janitor, which can, custodian, I am so sorry, I used the wrong words, I apologize, for a custodian, and that staffing that building would not cost any additional money to the division, because people who are currently located at other locations would move to Lindenwood. So we're looking at a cost of, let's say, $140,000 a year to keep that building operational, taking out any major, any major fixes that has to go on in the building.
$10,000 is a fair estimate for deferred maintenance.
But if, if we, we advertise that we have $500 million in deferred maintenance that hasn't been done, how much of that belongs to Lindenwood that we would have to do? Again, we're just dealing with general numbers, I, I think we should see, or I would like to see, something that shows what, what you're spending now for costs for lodging, the meals are gonna, are, are not included, but the, the costs that would be associated with a building.
Lindenwood's priority is almost $16 million.
Hotel rooms, you know, whatever, but not the food cost, transportation, or anything like that.
Alright, well, we, we just discussed $140,000 a year to keep the building going. It needs $16 million in deferred maintenance, but it also provides educational programs on its land that is invaluable to Norfolk Public Schools in the community. So I guess my question would be, can we get a cost of what we spent over, you know, an average cost over the last three years of what we spent when we had to go off-site? To compare that to the $130,000 a year that it would cost to keep the building going?
Yes, because we have to do principals' meetings, assistant...
I can, I can get that for you.
There's a lot of meetings.
I mean, it's, it's a lot of meetings that you're paying, it probably, it probably isn't $130,000 a year, but it could be. But it is still significant, and also, the...
Also over time.
Over time. And over time, we would be saving those, that money as well.
Madam Chair, if you, most school divisions our size have some kind of professional development center for PD and, and meetings and things like that, so this is not something that's out of the box, but it's, it's, it's common for school divisions our size to have a facility like that.
Got a great cafeteria, a huge one, that we could have large group meetings in. For any, any people.
So retain, Madam Chair.
Retain Lindenwood.
So, no, I, I, I'm fully in support of that, retaining, making sure our teachers have the PDS building that they need, so I wanted to just further go on to that, so... But we still have the conditions that if we need a population boom, we could reconvert it back into elementary, put it back on.
So, so we're keeping it, we're keeping it in our portfolio, but we're just not using, we're saving the money by not using it as a elementary school.
Alright, just wanna make sure you're...
So, on most plans, I see that we have rebuilding J Cox. Are we in agreement that that still needs to be done?
Mm-hmm.
Poor member Bassin and I, Madam Chair, poor member Bassin and I, we had, we had just mentioned to Dr. Polk in our meeting that with J Cox, maybe have it the size of Southside STEM Academy.
So what grades are you gonna service at J Cox?
Want the building the size of Southside?
The plan was still to keep it a PK 5 school right now, just if there were...
But you're gonna have a big building like Campus Center.
If there were, if, if there were possibility to, to add citywide programming to it, that's why. Part of the discussion.
Got the space there, so yeah.
Okay. Now, we need to talk about Chesterfield.
Okay, so, right now, let's, let's talk about CSEP. To close the cur, the, the, on the table is closing the current CSEP facility and repurposing Chesterfield for the CSEP student population, but, and closing the CSEP facility. So on almost every plan, these go hand in hand.
And Chesterfield's going where?
It will be rezoned.
To where?
Well, one of the plans talks about J Cox and Richard Bowling, but I guess after we do the whole rezoning process, that could additionally, that could also be altered. Could be Ingle Side.
Could be Ingle Side, yeah.
It just depends on where you live in that current school district.
And just so everybody knows, when they do a grid code change... Awkey, they're not perfectly square, they can be, can, will be a bit shaped.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, you know, CSEP and where to house it was one of the concerns that I did raise with Dr. Polk, because it's currently in the old Richard Bowling, which was, it's been there much, many years longer than it was ever supposed to be there, and so, my concern is that we have, you know, put CSEP in buildings that have been largely inadequate, you know, for, for our students, and I had raised the question of, are there any other buildings that we could put CSEP in, or anywhere else, you know, in any of our neighboring cities, since it is a regional program?
And that's, yeah, how many students use the, is that CSEP? Because Chesterfield is not a big school, but I think it's too big for CSEP.
CSEP has a small program.
Yeah.
They have small class sizes at CSEP, it would, it would fit over Chesterfield. The other option would be, though, if, if we were to move forward with developing an alternative program at Lake Taylor, you'd also have the Madison Easton building as well.
So, yeah, so, and, and I appreciate your explanation of why keeping CSEP in Norfolk is beneficial for us, especially as we're the fiscal agents for CSEP.
And we do have a good amount of students who attend CSEP as well. So having them locally, there are babies anyway, having them in the division, I think, is important.
So with that, you know, I still would like for the division administration to consider other building options that are in better condition, and like you said, if there's some opportunity with the re, with the boundary changes, that there's a building that opens up in better condition, let me consider that for CSEP.
We're, we're doing an electrical upgrade at Chesterfield, and, and we're gonna do the roof in about a year, so there is work. Chesterfield will be upgraded to accept the CSEP student.
Chesterfield's FCI.
That was, that was part of our five-year CIP plan. Yeah. And as some of y'all know, the Broad Creek project has been on hold for six years, because we've overextended our expected stay at the old Richard Bowling.
So the question is, right now, whether the old Richard Bowling is on this list, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's for CSEP?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
So, do we want to relocate CSEP?
Yes, out of that building, yes.
Would like to close the old James Monroe.
Correct.
No, old Richard Bowling.
Richard Bowling, Richard Bowling, sorry! Too many schools? It's getting close to my bedtime? Oh, I know. I know, I'm sorry. So, closing Rich, old Richard Bowling should be on this list.
Yes, ma'am. We've been referring to it as CSEP.
Yeah, closing, closing, relocate, but we don't, yeah, here, I see old Richard Bowling, okay. So we in agreement that, that facility, old Richard Bowling, needs to be closed, and that CSEP needs to be relocated? Are any major objections to that?
Could you repeat that, please?
That, we will close the old Richard Bowling facility, which currently... That, we will close the old Richard Bowling facility, which currently houses CSEP, and move CSEP into a better facility, which might, which at this point is identified as Chesterfield Academy.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. It, it didn't identify the building, it just says CSEP facility, it didn't use the term Richard Bowling.
The old Richard Bowling. Yeah, that, I was confused on that as well, so, that's been clarified. We just call, we just call the building CSEP, even though it is the old Richard Bowling. Okay, so CSEP, Old Richard Bowling will close. And at this point, it is slated for
What about Ocean Air? Repurpose of Ocean Air?
We already discussed the repurpose of Ocean Air. When we talked about the ECCs. That Ocean Air needs to be repurposed if we close Willoughby, because the Willoughby program needs to move into there.
I mean, is that gonna be done? We talked about closing the Willoughby.
Yes, we already discussed closing Willoughby. And Ocean Air.
That gives us, we're up to seven, by the way. Yes, ma'am.
I have, I have eight. Yeah, I have eight.
I've got two.
Well, I, I haven't counted, I haven't, I haven't counted
I, sorry, I have eight, then a nine would be Madison Easton, and ten would be the rebuilt J Cox, but that's not closing a building.
Oh, I do have rebuilt J Cox on there, yeah.
So the ten would be NTC, would be the
So, at this point, Chesterfield Academy will be repurposed as CSEP.
You're counting Lindenwood.
Um, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So what's the reason, what's the reason again? What is it, low? The children, um, the enrollment is low? Is that one of them?
Yes, ma'am. The, you can see what the enrollment is on the first analysis sheet.
It's right here.
Three oh eight.
We have six schools that are low infant, three hundred and eight students. Five of those are just low two hundreds. And all, all six of those schools are in this plan.
This one. And that's the main, that's the reason, the main reason. Oh, now it's easier. And how much a year, to run Chesterfield, with the students in there?
We only have to do the deferred maintenance that CSEP is an independent budget. So what, ten thousand a year is generally what we spend per building on deferred maintenance. Broken sinks, broken toilets, stuff like that. But it creates an opportunity for the city to develop that twelve-acre property, to finish up the Broad Creek project, and they're very interested in moving forward with that. It was supposed to be one year. The problem is, there is no available real estate in Norfolk. I spoke to, to the senior director of real estate for the city of Norfolk, there is no available
So we're moving Chesterfield out, so the city can get CSEP.
We, we are closing the old Richard Bowling, which we refer to as CSEP, and moving that program, we are suggesting to move that program into Chesterfield, and then moving the Chesterfield kids into what is probably gonna be two new buildings, Coleman Place, the new J Cox.
Or Ingle Side.
Just put brand-new air conditioning and brand-new roof on Ingle Side. We've, we put a six million dollars in Ingle Side in the last year and a half.
I can't tell if Colonel Paulson has his hand
Oh, Colonel, I'm sorry, thank you for keeping me honest.
I just see him doing
Colonel, did you have a comment?
Yes, I may have missed it, but what about Gant and Monroe?
We have not discussed Gant or Monroe. Well, not in this particular round.
Too low, low hanging fruit is closed VOTAC if we can move forward on Lake Taylor.
Yeah, I've got that. So, the other, other thing that needs to happen in tandem is renovating Lake Taylor High School to be able to accept, uh, NTC Norfolk educational center students, and so renovating Lake Taylor to making it a comprehen, a comprehensive CTE high school, and then closing the North, NTC, but those things have to be decided together. Are there any objections to that?
Can I just add, Madam Chair, just, it's actually kind of the trifecta, if, if we, if we still went with the Madison Easton as well, building up Lake Taylor to be the comprehensive CTE and building a strong alternative education center for our students at the same time, then, then that would be the Madison Easton and NTC.
So we would close, close both Madison and NTC then?
Correct, and they would move to Lake Taylor.
So we're not just talking about moving NTC, we're also talking about
Redesigning alternative
redesigning our alternative education program. Yes, Ms. Sine?
Okay, so, so you're proposing putting the alternative ed center in Lake Taylor High School, is that?
So I, I would, I would say that it would be in addition to Lake Taylor, so it's, it's at Lake Taylor, similar, so a neighboring division has a, an alternative center, Renaissance Academy, and it's, the building is actually subdivided, and it offers, it's able to offer, you know, a different program to the alternative ed students, which, which, you know, we, Madison at, at Easton is, is doing the job, but it's not doing the job. I, I think we can do better for our students.
Absolutely, and I'm looking forward to that alternative ed discussion that we're gonna have at some point. But I just wanted to be sure that I was understanding.
Right. So, so what is on the table is turning Lake Taylor into a comprehensive CTE high school that also houses our alternative education programs, and closing Madison and NTC. But those, those three things have to be decided together.
Madison at Easton.
Right. Madison at Easton, I'm sorry. Any, any concerns or thoughts about that?
You repeat that again, because you mentioned three things.
Sure. First, we will redevelop Lake Taylor High School into a comprehensive CTE high school, which will also house our alternative education programming. Once that is done, the VOTAC or the NTC building will be closed, as well as Madison at Easton. So that will be two buildings closing for the price of one remodeled building. We got a two-for-one deal in this one.
Well, actually, so we also have open campus at Easton.
It would be part of the alternative
It would, I, I just grouped them together as underneath alternative programming.
Right, but when I, I say all that in context of this, is that, I just, I want to be sure that open campus is not intertwined with Madison, as it's not a disciplinary
Correct.
You know, it's not a program for, you know, it's an alter, it's a alternative or non-traditional option for students to recover credit and to, you know
Right, all alternative
in a high school, but in a different
All alternative education is not discipline-based. It's an alternative form of education, so it would include open campus, it would include credit recovery, could include overage for grade, there's several things that could be included in a true alternative education program.
Dr. Martin? Can you bring your mic closer, because Colonel won't be able to hear you?
Actually, I think I forgot what I was gonna say, because I was listening. Oh, yes, so, for me, the, in the renovations, and having all these wonderful programs going on in Lake Taylor, I would really like to see, um
I can't hear anyone.
Sorry. I was, I would really like to see some windows, you know, just things to make it more welcoming environment, and, and, and I think that would go a long way with attracting the students to that building.
So, you know, we're, we're in the midst of a study with the comprehensive CTE program, and they're, they've, they've paused the meeting where we wanted to have for where they are with the planning process, so that it doesn't get clouded with the work being done right here, right now. But, you know, I know in one of the renditions that was seen early on, you know, it opens up all the stairwells, and, you know, it makes it a much more open building, and much more inviting building, you know, in the process.
And even beautification of the outside of the building would be
Correct, it does, it includes
Wonderful, okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I think we're in agreement about those moves, I don't hear any, any objections. Now, to circle So, to circle back around, an option on the table is to leave James Monroe as-is, and redistrict to increase the student population at that school, and redistricting is necessary in that part of the city, considering what is going on at, at Taylor, being too full, well, with the, with the addition of their inclusion programs, just not having the space that they need, even if there are seats available. And we would not move the Gant program into James Monroe, however, and this is a big however, we, we reserve the right to move Gant to a better facility if one becomes available in the whole redistricting process. As we are redistricting and we see where enrollment, you know, what schools are, we put our students into, if a, if a better option comes to the table for Gant, then the Gant program will potentially be moved in the future. It doesn't mean that, so for the Maury, for the Maury families, it doesn't mean that Gant is necessarily staying there forever, and for the Gant families, it, it means that you are not up for building closure at this time, but it's conceivable that in the future, a better location where the school would, where the program would be able to grow and attract more students, would be, would be a positive outcome.
So to make it clear, Gant is not a part of this plan.
Would not be a part of this plan at this time.
Madam Chair, so, so I may just, for the community's sake, you know, maybe put withdraw Gant as a closure, just so that it's clear for everyone that Gant is not being closed at this time.
That's what I just said.
No, that's what, but I'm saying put it on the list.
Yeah, put, put it in writing.
Put it in writing.
But I, but I would also say with the caveat that if, uh, 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 through the redistricting process, if we find a better space for that program, that potentially the program could be moved in the, in the next few years.
But, okay, you contradicting yourself now.
No, no, I'm not. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying on our, on our current plan, it is, the building is not up for closure. However, we don't know how the redistricting process is gonna shake out. You know, it may turn out that there is a building that we were not even thinking of that would be a better alternative for the Gant program, but we don't know that.
I'm standing there, right. You saying they're not part of this plan, but yet you're saying it can be a part of the plan.
I'm saying that it's potentially down the road, they, they could be part of the plan. I don't want to, I don't want to put out there to either the Maury families or the Gant families, that this is definitely happening or definitely not happening, it's just not happening now. Because we'll, we'll get concern on both sides, about wanting to be able to have those full athletic fields versus, you know, staying in the building, where we know the building is, the building can't get bigger, the footprint of the school can't get bigger, and in order to grow that program, which is a very successful program, we would eventually have to find another facility for that program. That is what I am saying.
I'm standing there, wait a minute, but, okay.
So that is the list.
That's, that's nine closures.
What about the suburban park? I didn't hear that mentioned.
That's not up to you.
For, for thi, at this point, it is not on the list for rebuild. The only school that is on the list for rebuild is J Cox Elementary, and Lake Taylor for renovation.
So, how many closures do we have? Nine?
And then one, with one repurpose.
And one repurpose.
We have four repurposes. We're gonna repurpose Ocean Air, Lindenwood.
We only have seven closures.
No, we have nine closures.
Nine?
Yes.
Oh, count, counting, uh, the CSEP in the future and NTC in the future.
Yes, absolutely.
So where's the tenth one?
Don't have ten on this plan. Because we are repurposing Lindenwood. Closing it as a school, so we are cost, we are saving money running it as a school, but we are keeping it in the portfolio, A, if we ever needed another school, and B, to use it as a professional development center, which we very much need in this division.
I still want us, I'd like to see some financial data to support that, because I don't, I can't calculate that in my mind.
Okay. All right.
I don't have any data to look at, that's what I'm saying.
And Dr. Paul is going to provide, Dr. Paul will provide us with some data.
To the whole board, correct?
Yes, to the whole board, when he gets those numbers. So we have successfully identified the schools. And I, I believe that moving with the twenty-six, twenty-seven options from option five, to get us started, along with redistricting, with the understanding that the rest of these closures will take place by, what was it, twenty thirty-four?
That's what we said, yeah.
That the remaining closures and consolidations will take place by twenty thirty-four, with the goal of closing one to two schools per year, is our plan. At least, at least, at a minimum, one to two schools per year, by twenty thirty-four. Yes, ma'am?
I've said this a few times. Really laying out a timeline for these schools to be able to celebrate the history of the schools that they're in, and bodies are introduced to each other ahead of time, and all of that is, they're welcomed, that, they don't want anything to be rushed.
And I appreciate
Adele, put your mic in front of you, please, I can't hear you. Okay. So as, without repeating everything, I was just saying, reiterating that we need to be very intentional in the leaving of one school, and, and merging of these student populations, and making sure that we're very sensitive to how emotional it can be.
Would we consider creating committees based, made up of administrators, parents, community members, and staff?
Yeah, so, listed on, you know, that was shared last week, that was on the list, of saying that each school would have their own committee, and we would, we would assist with that work, to make sure that the communities are joined together, that, you know, if there's a field day or other events, the new schools are invited to come over there through this whole process, yeah, under the assurances.
The ice cream diplomacy.
Hey, we're, we're all for it, and, and, you know, and, you know We're, we're all for it, and, and, you know, and, you know, and when I'm out and about visiting schools, when principals ask questions, especially if I'm in a school that's on this list, that's, you know, they're equally as concerned, Dr. Barton. They want to make sure that they have the time to make sure that they can acclimate before students just show up at their doorstep. So that families are aware how welcome they are.
All right, so I think we have come up with a plan that everybody can feel good about, that addresses the needs. It has, it has a timeline. The timeline will be the timeline of the exact schools will be of, after the first set of closures in 26, 27, will be determined by the spring of 2026 at the latest.
Correct.
But the plan is in 2027 to close at least one to two schools per year and through 2034, or less time if that is all that is needed.
Correct.
But that we will use redistricting to figure out, we'll take those, we'll take these schools out of the portfolio and redistrict accordingly. Any comments, final comments or concerns? Okay, go ahead, Colonel.
I'm, I'm opposed to Plan Five, or Option Five. It is not definitive enough, you, we have talked about it, and, and it still is not projecting good movement or correctional movement in closing of the schools, as, as was advised, that we needed to do that. Number two, this agreement, or whatever you want to call it, between Monroe and Gant, I'd like to see it in writing, because it does not sound like there's going to be positive movement there. Something that was going to happen, and now it's not. I'm, I, I object to that.
You, you believe that, I'm sorry, let me clarify question, clarifying question. Do you believe that Gant, Gant's building should be closed and the program should be moved into James Monroe? Because the option that we have on the floor now does not do that. Do you, do you believe that Monroe needs to be redistricted out of Monroe and that the Gant program has to go into James Monroe? Because that is, and this option is not on the table.
There could be another place for it to go, but it should, the Gant facility should move.
Right, which is, which is actually what we just previously discussed.
That's in the future.
Well, that, that wouldn't, that, the future, I mean, the future as in we'd have to see how the rezoning shakes out before we could make a decision about that.
So it may be in this plan.
It may be, it may be in addition to this plan.
Okay, you said it wasn't, so let's make it clear.
Okay, so the plan as it stands today, let's just put the caveat that come spring of 2026, Gant's movement could be back on the table. Based on redistricting.
And again, Mr. Stewart said you can't do that until after everybody's moved, so if they're not moved.
No, he never, he never said that. Um, Mr. Fraley, can you speak to that?
We need the schools that will close identified definitively once we, I'm sorry. We need, I'll get it right. We need the schools that are going to close to be definitively identified once we have that list, and, and we've all just agreed to two pre-Ks, four elementaries, VOTAC, CSEP at the old Richard Bowling, and Madison alternative, so that's nine schools. Once we give that to him, then they can start redistricting. As you all know, VOTAC, CSEP, and Madison, and the two pre-Ks really aren't going to affect the redistricting. The only thing that's really going to affect the redistricting are the four elementary schools, because they're the ones that have domicile placements. So it shouldn't be that complicated to get this rezoning domicile stuff done. But, but once we have those locked in, I can get David's team moving.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, ma'am. And even if you all decided to close Gant, it's not a domicile school. So that's not going to hold us up for the redistricting.
Right, right. Gant can be decided on later because it is not part of the redistricting process.
One of our six.
Does that, that clear that up for you, Colonel?
It's, uh, you've mentioned it, but I'm still not confident that I have enough information to agree at this point, or to, for, for it to be assumed that I'm going to agree.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns at this point? We do have a plan that we can vote on. There are some clarif, clarif, points of clarification that need to be addressed before the vote next week. But we have identified the schools slated for closure tonight. And so if there are no other comments or concerns. What? I will.
Oh, we don't?
No, we do not have a closed session.
Maybe I was, I was probably looking at the wrong board, Doc.
Probably looking at next week's. All right, well then.
I think congratulations are in order.
Yes, so. The meeting is adjourned.
Good work, everybody.